Hello and good evening. And welcome to the August 28, 2018, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. Hope everyone had a good rest of the summer since we last convened. Certainly, a hot couple of days as we get ready for a new and exciting school year, but certainly welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order and, as we do, offer the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read the mission statement. It is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet the individual needs and interests. Next part of the agenda is open the meeting available to any member of the public who'd like to raise an issue with the Wakefield School Committee on any matter, whether it's on the agenda or not. We welcome that time now. Seeing none, we will move along to the consent agenda. We have a motion. Mr. Countering?
The School Committee approves the minutes of July 24, 2018, School Committee meeting, and accept the minutes of June 8, 2018, School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Budget items. Six, number six on the agenda, budget items. Mr. Piffling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet, we have the new financial statements for fiscal year 19. We've loaded all the budget. We have encumbered salaries as we know them. Unfortunately, this seems to be the time of year where some of our professionals find employment in other places, and typically, it's our power professionals who are licensed teachers and find opportunities other places as teachers as they begin their career teaching. So, we do have some movements coming, but as of last week, this was the latest. So, salaries are encumbered, slightly over budget in salaries, but nothing I'm concerned with. Some of that is some carryover from last year, but everything seems to be in line there. We've started, or we've purchased the majority of our supplies and textbooks for the year, so we're good on supplies and textbooks. Obviously, there'll be smaller purchases throughout the year, but the bulk purchases have been done. So, either they're already invoiced, or they are still encumbered, depending on whether they've come in yet or not, but most of that is accounted for also. Other than that, you know, all the other lines seem to be relatively in line with what we had budgeted. We're still waiting to see our circuit breaker number for the year, so when that comes in, that could be adjusting our sped tuition line. But I believe special education has the majority of tuitions encumbered that they're aware of. Certainly, others will come up throughout the year, but for right now, we feel like we're comfortable in special education, which is a nice tune this year as opposed to last year. I'm not sure if there's any questions on the local budget.
Did we just have new things come along since the budget was done that we've got a couple lines that are over encumbered?
So, the AIDS line of the salaries, I think Mr. Lyons is going to talk about that in a little bit as far as...
Line four.
Line four of your budget reports, yeah. The AIDS line is over by about $150,000. Some of that is new positions that we needed to add for services, special education services that were required for some medically fragile children. And then, we also did tuition in a student from another town into our preschool medically fragile classroom, and we had to hire an aide, but we will get that back on the tuition side. So, we built the tuition with knowledge that we had to have an aide, a full-time, one-to-one aide. We needed to have benefits included because it was a full-time position, plus the base tuition cost. So, all that was factored in. But some of that is due to any of the aides in special education unanticipated, but you know, the way it was explained to me is that either we hired these aides and give one-to-one, or potentially, they go out, or maybe it was to bring them back in, or, you know, especially the Doyle, we kept him in, but in higher grades, sometimes it would be if we don't bring on an aide, we have the potential of losing this child to an out-of-district placement. So, the cost of an aide is between $20,000 and $25,000 plus benefits, and an out-of-district placement could be $60,000 or $80,000. So, the offset is certainly outweighs the... And keeping the child, obviously. There's an educational value to keeping the child in town, but from a financial standpoint, which is where we are right now in my reports, it makes financial sense to hire the aide instead of placing the child out of district.
Mike, this is as of August 28, right?
August 23.
August 23.
I didn't get the salaries encumbered until after the first month, so I did want to show with the encumbered salaries, so I did push them out. And Ms. Procella had approached me with a question earlier today on the sped tuition line. If you look at the FY '18 actual, it shows that we expended $2.88 million, and the budget for this year is $2.77. So, it's about $110,000, $111,000 less budgeted this year than we actually expended last year, but that was due to a couple things. Circuit breaker came in lower than we had anticipated until the final hour, when they did give us, I think it was 72 percent, it finally came in at. So, we did not spend out of circuit breaker last year because we already had the sped stabilization, special education stabilization fund transfer from the town. So, had we had the circuit breaker, our expenditures out of local budget last year would have been less. I think we actually got $140,000 more at the end of the year for circuit breaker, and the difference between this year's budget and last year's expended is $110,000, so that really just levels that off. But it was a great question, Ms. Procella. I appreciate you asking and making me do a little homework tonight. So, that's kind of it on the local budget. There's no other questions. Grants are starting to come in. We do have the Title II A grant, Title I grant, the 240 Special Education Grant, which is the IDEA. That's probably our largest grant. That one came in higher than last year, or higher than projections, by about $8,000. Unfortunately, Title I came in $6,300 less, so it's kind of a wash on those two, although they're used for totally different things. You know, from a plus-minus on the total grants line, it was pretty much a wash. Slight increase on teacher improvement or improving educational quality grant, and the MEKO grant has come in much higher, but again, there's restrictions on what that can be used for, so it can offset some of the local budget things. But all in all, we came in about $77,000 higher than we had anticipated or budgeted, but they are grants, so they can only be used for certain things. We did carry a balance last year on our Title I grant of $42,000, so that'll help us a little bit. Actually, that's why we're up $77,000. Forty-two of that 77 is carryover from last year. We did not anticipate carrying over any money, but what we had, we write the grant for, you have to spend it on what you write it for, and if we didn't invest in those things, then we can't use it for something else. We couldn't use it to pay off the special education situation we had last year. So, that money carried. Sometimes, it's where we hire somebody late, or we put into the budget, the Title I budget, that we're going to hire somebody at a certain level, and they come in a little higher, a little lower. So, it's different things can dictate why we do or do not spend the money. Plus, the previous year, we had to carry forward also. You always have to spend the previous year before you can spend the current year, so that's why we ended up with a surplus in Title I, even though we were down on what we had planned to get. Just quickly on the revolving...
Great question.
What's that? Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, sure.
This is something I wanted to ask about, that I've drawn about, so that the Chapter 70 and local contribution numbers. So, just, I believe, I understand, so because our Chapter 70 number came in, just shy of $132,000 more than we had budgeted for, our local contribution from the tax base is, as a result, $132,000 less.
Yeah, I think the way Mr. Mayo would explain it is all the money comes into the town, whether it's tax base or Chapter 70 money, or construction highway, was it Chapter 90's highway? All the money comes into the town, and then it gets dispersed out at town meetings. So, if we get more in Chapter 70 than we anticipated, it does, there's less that's taken off the tax base. But sometimes, our Chapter 70 money comes in higher, but our, or the town's charter school reimbursement comes in lower, or charter school assessment comes in higher.
Yep.
So, it's really like a big pool of money that comes in, and then it goes back out.
Right.
So, while our Chapter 70 came in higher, that's phenomenal, but I do know that the charter school numbers were not favorable for us this year.
Right.
And I don't know where the highway numbers came in. I don't know where the veteran affairs numbers came in. There's library money that comes in. There's MBTA money that comes in.
Many different sources are remaining.
There were definitely for the town, so it's all on the cherry sheet, but I mean, I think on the bottom line of the cherry sheet, the town did have a favorable over last year, but it's nothing dramatic or nothing substantial. Certainly not what our representatives had indicated maybe we'd be getting at the last meeting or two meetings ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to the revolving accounts, I have to say, Kristen Morello and I sat down, and within Munis, we have, every year, we change the revolving account numbers by one digit to represent the new year, and we did a little homework, a little investigating, and we did find a little bit of money that had been not carried forward every year for the last couple of years. So, you can see that our starting balance with the lunch, school lunch department is, I'll call it healthy. It's not substantial, but it's healthy. There is a limit on how much money we can carry in those accounts, so I did ask Kristen to put together a little punch list of some improvements she's held off, and we've mandated a few things over the years, some freezers and some other items, some warmers. So, I asked her to kind of punch list some things because we should invest a little bit in the equipment if we have a surplus there, but she's done a phenomenal job compared to when we both got here.
So, that difference between last year's balance and this year's balance is just because there was an overlooked line someplace?
Overlooked, or when they transferred from Budget Sense, which was the old accounting software, to Munis, we were using Munis for payroll already. When everything transferred over, the payroll numbers were still there, so it showed a big deficit, so we really didn't know what we had. We had to drill down into it, and Kristen and I sat down and drilled down into it and conferred with Kevin Gill, and he confirmed that there was a surplus in the, what we called a 10 account, which was the oldest account, that was the first-year account when we switched over to Munis from Budget Sense. So, I mean, it's a positive thing. I mean, I always knew there was a lot of money in there, I just didn't know exactly how much it was, and it wasn't... Kristen was doing a great job, so we knew that we had the money sitting on our side there, but it's good that we've now got it reported in the right year, so. But all the other revolving accounts, really, just, you know, athletics, the performing arts accounts, they're all, even with the reduction in fees, all of the fundraising and other cost-cutting measures that they've made have been well documented, so it's great to see that we don't have any close numbers on those areas. They're not overly funded, but they're, you know, it's not like some years where we got down to athletics and had $1,000 left in the revolving account and still had $600 in bills to pay. So, we're doing really well with that. Brendan's doing a great job, and Tom Bankard certainly always keeps an eye on the money, so. And right now...
Transportation.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Transportation.
So, transportation is really not a revolving account, although I report it as a revolving account. The town does not, the way it's set up by town charter, it's a offset account, meaning I cannot expend from it, I cannot pay bills from it, I can't pay the bus company. It'd be great if we collected $115,000 and I just paid some of the bus bills from it, but the town doesn't allow us to do that because it's an offset account. So, they actually have to transfer this year what happens, they ask me every year when and we're building our budget, and they're going to town meeting, how much money we anticipate getting in user fees. So, this year, I told them that I anticipated getting, I think it was $115,000.
Well, you have it expanded. That's expanded, yeah.
Yeah, so that expended is $115. Actually, it wasn't expended, it went to the town, and the town then added $115 to our bottom-line budget. If you go back to the very first page of the budget, you'll see a transfer on the transportation of $115,000 in the local budget. So, it comes out of revolving. The town just takes it out of revolving, puts it into our local budget.
That negative 80 is not a real number, then?
Well, no, the negative 80 really isn't. It is a real number, but we are still collecting bus fees, and this was from two weeks ago, so, yeah, so that will...
That will go away?
Yeah, that will go away.
Okay.
Absolutely go away, and usually, there's a few thousand dollars surplus. I'm usually conservative, and when I tell the town how much money we anticipate getting in fees, I said this year, $115,000. I'm usually a little conservative. I think that number came in last year at like $116,000 or $117,000, so we should be pretty safe there.
Just one quick question for the circuit breaker. The 268, does that reflect the last-minute increase that we received, or that we're going to receive?
So, that was, that 268 is about $80,000 that we had in circuit breaker at the end of last year, plus that influx of money that we got when they went from 65 to 72 percent, which was about $140,000, $144,000.
Okay.
So, that represents that. So, it starts us with a little cushion should we have a situation like last year, or any year, that you have students that go out of district and unanticipated students move into district.
Right.
If they move into district and they're going to a private school, we don't have to pay for them the first year, their previous district does.
Okay.
But if they move in and they're going to a collaborative school, or a public school, but not maybe Wakefield Public Schools, but a collaborative is considered a public school, we own them from day one.
Okay.
So, it's nice to have a little cushion there if you have some students move in, or one of our own students needs to go out for services, whether it's, whatever the services are, special education services, so it's nice to have a little buffer there. Usually, our buffer's about $100,000, but because we did get that surplus after town meeting, after the sped stabilization had come through from the town meeting, it stayed in the circuit breaker, so.
And are those numbers, like next to circuit breaker, 797, is that just for your internal, like coding?
Yeah, that's, those are Munis account numbers, so that I don't, I don't know why they're there, because I usually have them hidden.
Just wondering.
They're usually hidden, but yeah, I can remove them if they're...
No, no, it's fine. I just was like, should I know what that is?
But as you can see right now, we have encumbered $1.44 million in circuit breaker right now, but in the budget, we only budgeted $1.36 million, I believe.
Okay.
So, depending on where circuit breaker comes in for the year, that number could be transferred back to the front page to, some of those tuitions could be transferred back to the local budget. I think right now, there was a surplus on that line of about $400,000, which, again, with special education could, $409,000, I think, right now, that number could dwindle very quickly.
Okay.
But, you know, we'll wait and see what the final number comes in.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'll have that...
Is that like September, October?
Yeah. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we'll have it before our next meeting, but certainly before the October 9 meeting would be, you know, worst-case scenario, I think.
Got it. Thank you.
So, new year, new numbers. In addition, I have four payroll warrants. We missed a meeting there, so I do have four payroll warrants, warrants two, four, six, and eight for fiscal year 19 that I would ask the committee approve.
And we hold a motion.
The School Committee approved payroll warrants two, four, six, and eight as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
That is all I have tonight. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Item number seven. What I would like to move on to, I want to skip over 7A for this point, and perhaps return to that. Go on to 7B. We have received, I've received on our behalf, the annual report for the Mystic Valley Regional Charter School. It's an obligation of the charter school to provide such an annual report to its sending districts, and it's our obligation to provide it to members of the committee and to the public. So, it has been provided in this evening's packet, and we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of that.
The School Committee acknowledged receipt of the annual report of the Mystic Valley Regional Charter School as required by Massachusetts General Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Leakos.
A question on the report, and I'm not sure, Doug, if you know the answer to this. I was trying to read page 20 here on their report, which breaks down their student, the school's student population, low-income disabled, and then other demographic information. So, one of the things, I guess I was going to caution the public and members of the school committee to, at least from my perspective, when I look at some of the numbers, things like MCAS achievement results, SAT scores, et cetera, et cetera, caution against comparing this to Wakefield Public Schools because it's an apples-and-oranges comparison. If you put side-by-side, I think the most important data that I don't see here are students in poverty, students with disabilities, and English-language learners. If, my guess is that all of those, the percentages of all of those populations that are served by the charter school are much lower than those served by almost all the public schools in the charter school's district, including ours. So, is that a fair statement?
I think it is a fair statement.
Okay.
I think it's definitely students with disabilities.
Yeah.
The percentage is probably 5% or 6% less.
Yeah, yeah.
When compared in the aggregate to our own.
Right.
I think in terms of economically disadvantaged students, I think their numbers are, might be similar by percent.
Might be comparable, okay.
But the rest is a different.
Yeah.
It's a different kind of student look in the aggregate.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, next, under Chair Actions. I handed out earlier this evening at the opening of the meeting a set of recommendations regarding the Subcommittee's structure for this year. I want to, again, thank members of the committee and some members of the community who have reached out, who, well, one, we had a thorough conversation at our last meeting, and we've had some conversations at really the last couple of meetings, which I found very healthy and refreshing, and we've actually received some comments from the community as well. So, taking that, taking all of that into account, presenting to you tonight a couple recommendations for the committee's review and consideration. In the document, under the introduction, which I certainly don't need to read to you, but I did copy and provide two of the School Committee policy documents with regard to this topic. One is entitled Subcommittee's of the School Committee, where it speaks to the purposes, the functions, the authorities, the expectations around the Subcommittee's work. This is nothing new. This is, Subcommittee's have been part of our work for well before any of us were sitting here, perhaps not Chris, of course, but before any of the rest of us were working, sitting here. But be that as it may, also, the other document that I thought had some meaning with regard to this was Policy 203 on School Committee Member Authority, which is simply just as a nice reminder, as we're getting into Subcommittee season, that Subcommittee's in and of themselves do not have any independent authority, never have. They have, the authority is solely rested in the body as a whole. Subcommittees are intended to be sort of specialists that get together on a regular basis and become the experts, if you will, on topics, and then report back, do the sort of roll-up-the-sleeves investigation, inquiry work, working, of course, with the administration, but doing that type of work on the full committee's behalf, and then reporting back. So, I think you all know these things, but since I sort of took it upon myself to prepare a recommendation, I thought it might be informative to just provide a hard copy of the document that has been in existence for a while. With that in mind, I have two recommendations to make to the committee. The, on page one of the handout, the, I guess, the effective re-establishment or the recommissioning of the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, the recommissioning of the Labor Relations Subcommittee with a paragraph that you see specific around FY '19 as a negotiations year, just a call to the community and the public's and, obviously, the committee's attention. So, part of that work, that specific work, although other things may come up, of course, but nonetheless, the specific work around that will be specifically the labor relations discussions, negotiations with the collective bargaining groups. All collective bargaining group contracts expire August 31, 2019, so we will be, we'll be beginning in earnest at some point, probably in the next couple of months. So, anyway, so that sort of goes without saying, the establishment or the recommissioning of those two groups. We had some good conversation around, obviously, the, part of this recommendation is the recommissioning of the Policy Subcommittee, which is pretty standard fare for us, but I'm adding, recommending that we add to that the task of communications and outreach to the community, that we had sort of had parts of conversation around that. We at one point last chaired, to my memory, by former committee member, Anne Danahue, we had a communications outreach group that worked in the first year, and correct me if I'm misremembering this, but the first year of Dr. Zrych's term, and there was an awful lot of communications that we did that I think supported the onboarding of Dr. Zrych and his work, the messaging that he wanted to communicate, the messaging that the district wanted to share either within itself, within our own buildings and staff, as well as the community at large. And I got to thinking that that might be an apropos time to bring back that work with a bit of a charge, not only in light of a new superintendent, but in light of lots of things that are happening across the district. So, I'm recommending that we add communications to the Policy Subcommittee charge. I'm also, as part of that recommendation's also a bit of practicality, perhaps, to be candid, that if we established a fourth, or when we get to recommendation two, a fifth Subcommittee, we'd be wearing ourselves pretty thin in doing double, triple duty. So, there's a practical piece to adding communications to the work of the policy group, but that's certainly subject to the, obviously, the committee's full discussion and, you know, action. Recommendation number two is something that we've had some great discussion on, both around this table, as well as lots of information that's been presented to us, I think going back probably to as early, if not before, some of the public hearings leading into the fiscal '19 budget and services and expectations. So, my recommendation is, and has been discussed around this table already, but that we put forward a new Subcommittee for Student Services to be established, and I will read a part of this if you don't mind me doing so, "To be established for the purpose of working with school administration to review and evaluate policies and procedures in the conduct of educational services available to all students. Such services, subject to the review of the Subcommittee, shall include but not be limited to coordinating, budgeting, and delivery of special education services, in-district and out-of-district accommodations, 504 plans, social-emotional supports, health and wellness, and gender equity, among others. Student Services Subcommittee in coordination with the school administration shall use this platform to help inform, educate, and guide the timely awareness and, as appropriate, actions of the full Subcommittee on Expectations and Regulations of Mass. General Law and DESI Policy and Practice on Special Education Services and Civil Rights." So, that was sort of the summary that I gathered from participating in the conversation and listening, and I think that this is an appropriate time. I think there's some desire, both around the table, and I think this is a good time to share with the community both thoughts, concerns, and really, how some things work. And this might be when the superintendent and I were discussing this, this sort of topic, one of the things that came up was this would be a great opportunity as a platform for this committee to bring, for this Subcommittee, rather, to bring some thinking back to the full table, to have us all become more aware, even if we have some set-aside times during meetings to become more aware of what certain special education accommodations are, what the practices are, what the policies are, what the laws are, what the expectations the practices are, what the policies are, what the laws are, what the expectations of the school district are, what is the school district required to do, what is the school district not required to do, how do those accommodations get met sometimes? Perhaps, you know, we have sort of a dual obligation, right, to be responsive to the needs of parents, and also to be sort of, you know, ambassadors or landlords of the responsibilities that are truly that of the school district, that there are laws and accommodations that require us to do certain things, and there's expectations that we're not frankly required to do certain things. So, there might be a good, this might be a good time, in my view anyways, and I think conversations that we've already had, this might be a good time to energize such a group to be mindful and thoughtful, and to be, use it as an awareness, at a minimum, as an awareness campaign of the type of issues that are truly out there. And certainly, work that would go into not only understanding the administration of the FY19 services and 19, FY19 budget, but unfortunately, it's probably not too far in the future that the administration will begin planning the FY20 budget. So, we've got also a dual, a dual thinking there. One of the things I'd like to also, if I, allow me to read, the second paragraph under recommendation two, "It's one of the first tasks of this new Student Services Subcommittee will be to work with the superintendent, developing an outline for its mission, direction, and activity for the year. Such a plan should be presented to the full school committee for its review, guidance, and approval prior to the commencing of Subcommittee work and its use of district resources or personnel." I think one of the things that probably with a, with anything new, we're sort of all experiencing what that looks like. So, I think it may be healthy, at least in my, my thinking in making this recommendation, it may be healthy at the beginning to appreciate, as the committee gets assembled, what its work is, and design a mission, design a charge, if you will, and have that be fairly organic, have that come from within the roots of the committee as it gets established, but not to, you know, not to move forward without the full committee, as all committees must do, without the full committee's awareness and work and allowance for use of district resources. So, with that in mind, hopefully, my summary wasn't too exhaustive, but I do want to say, again, thanks for what has been, I think, three meetings of good conversation, both on and, on and off the, being around the table. So, with that in mind, I certainly open it up for, for conversation and thoughts. We also have a motion. Want to read the motion? Might that be appropriate first?
Well, I don't even want to follow Robert's rules.
Well, you know.
Move the, move that the school committee approve and enact the school committee's structure of subcommittees as recommended by the chair.
Second.
Let me say, at the, also, under the parts of the motion, if there is a level of discomfort that the committee would like, I would rather that we, that someone ask that we remove the recommendation and review it as opposed to having it voted down. That's merely, I don't have any ego around that, I just think it may be, if more input or thoughts are needed, let's actually do that as a consensus item, if that, if I can, if I can say that. So, okay, discussion. Mr. Cowan in?
Two things. On the, the new committee, I mean, I think your intent is to go in the direction I'm thinking, but I think they have to take very slow and deliberate steps, because I think it would be very easy to get into the weeds and also allow ourselves to be, like, to, for people to circumvent the structure that's in place, for people, like a chain of command to be followed. I mean, I don't think it's our place to have people come to us instead of to the Fed Director with their individual cases, where I think that the purpose of this committee, to me, is to, you know, I'd like to emphasize, the evaluate policies and procedures rather than get involved in individual cases. That would be my biggest concern on how that moves forward. I guess, in my mind, when this was on the agenda, I was expecting to know who you wanted on which committee at this meeting, and we still don't have that information. Is that, when are we going to talk about that?
Well, okay, that's a great, that's a great point. My expectation, maybe, was that we would establish the committees or reestablish them, especially with the, sort of, the recommissioning of finance and labor relations, and the addition now of communications into the other one, and the establishment of a, of a new committee, I felt that we should establish the committees before we get into the, sort of, the inside baseball of who sits where, to be candid.
Okay.
So, my expectation would be that if, if this moves forward tonight, say, say, the stars align and we're all on the same page and we approve this motion, and we've established these committees, I would then be asking people, as past chairs have for years, to...
Who wants to be where?
Who wants to be where? Send me your top choices, and for a appointment at our first September meeting.
Okay. So, I have no problem with the suggested structure. Okay.
If I may just add, I couldn't agree more with the concern that you're raising with regard to process, that's my word, not necessarily yours, but I'm thinking that what may be helpful to, to the community, the school committee, as well as, as well as the public, is the review of these policies and procedures might actually enlighten people on how it actually works.
Mm-hmm.
Because one of the things, and I don't necessarily know this, but we all, from an occasion, get outreach from concerned parents around something, or general residents, my sense around this issue, which I think we've all had interactions with the public in the last, certainly, the six months, is that some of them may not be appreciative of what the process actually is, and therefore, go to the elected official thinking...
Appreciative or aware?
Either, or both.
Okay.
But anyways, so I, my two senses, the first thing that should come from this is this education piece, this information gathering, how things work, informing, sort of like a Special Ed 101 for the general public.
I just don't want to, my concern was that I don't want to send the wrong message.
Right.
I want to be clear upfront.
Fair enough, yeah, fair enough, absolutely. Ms. Fordyear.
So, while you were speaking, Mr. Chair, I was doing a quick Google search.
Multitasking.
I was.
Yes.
And, and there are other communities that do have a whole array of subcommittees.
Indeed.
And some of whom have a student support Subcommittee or student services Subcommittee. I, in, in theory, I like the idea of this fourth Subcommittee. My worry is, is using the term student services doesn't, it doesn't, it feels like it's just for kids on IEPs, but in fact, what you've written in this paragraph is policies and procedures with respect to 504 plans, social and emotional supports, health and wellness, gender equity, et cetera. And so, I would like the, if, I mean, I'd like to get other folks' feedback around just having a name of this Subcommittee that's a little bit more reflective of the broader scope, so maybe that would prevent people from thinking of this Subcommittee as only working with a very specific population. Am I just reading too finely in this, or...
I mean, I just personally feel like if we call it a special education Subcommittee, then that clearly is meant, you know, or interpreted as special education, but where it's student services, I feel like that is kind of broad, and it does enable someone to say, okay, well, this is a student services Subcommittee, so maybe it pertains to this and that.
Okay.
I think it does widen the lens, in my opinion.
Is our, is our special education department, for lack of a better word, isn't it called student services, or no? I can't remember.
It's special ed, right?
It's called student services.
And we have a student services...
But what's under student services? Is it also the nurse and, and other departments?
Yeah, there are several things, you know, I think there are several things under student services, so I, I think, just in reflecting what I'm, I think I'm hearing, you know, in the third line, you know, educational services available to all students in the Wakefield Public Schools, right? If all means all, then that would mean, not only special education, that would mean, you know, any of the students in any of the groups that are listed, but it would also mean in other groups that aren't listed, right? And so, you know, it, one of the things that I sometimes hear from parents is, you know, you know, we hear a lot about students that need support, but what about students that need to be challenged? You know, you know, and just on balance, you know, I think parents have respectfully said, you know, in a very thoughtful way, you know, can that be part of a conversation, right? Can that be included when we're talking about the needs of all students? You know, because we have, you know, high achievers that have a certain set of needs that may not be the same needs as someone else, and, but at times, they are the same needs, and I think the distinction is not always clear. But I think, you know, in going back to what Chris said, you know, I think the, the proof is in the work, right? I think if we can do this work in a balanced way, I think we have a really nice opportunity to bring information to the public, you know, and I think it can inform, really, the decisions that are made around curriculum and services that we provide for our students, for all of our students, but...
So, it's really just, sort of, I was kind of getting caught up in the semantics, I think, as long as, as the work that we do is reflective of policy and procedures versus kind of overseeing or management.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly, if I may, certainly was my intention in bringing this recommendation forward, to use a term, a descriptor, that was broad, you know, being, you know, familiar enough with it, with education, the district administration, student services is a broader term, not a narrower term, and that's why I also thought it appropriate to list a few of the types of things that I'm thinking would be, would be notable, and perhaps of interest to the community, both the school committee and the community at large, the, these are the types of things. There's probably another dozen that we could very easily add, you know, under, under just equity, there's another, I mean, civil rights, as I did mention later on, certainly something, and, you know, athletics, you know, gender equity I did include, but there's lots of things, and, you know, even to Chris's point earlier, it, this work needs to begin somewhere. It's entirely likely that it will begin with special education. That is a topic that has been thoroughly discussed, so let's not be naive about what's likely to be the first work from this group. But be that as it may, I don't think, and the recommendation I made tonight, is that we not establish a special education Subcommittee, that we establish a committee that works on behalf of all students and the type of supports that all students may need. You know, we, when you got me thinking, and I almost typed in, you know, gifted and talented, I said, well, that's a very old term, I'm dating myself, I don't use that anymore, but I almost typed it, for the lack of thinking about what, you know, the term you used, Doug, was gifted, high achieving. So, that very well was a thought that I had in mind, I just wasn't sure how to, how to type it correctly. But, what to call, but nonetheless, so I think there's lots of things that this could, that this could evolve into, and I think it might dovetail nicely with the types of priorities that we're looking at. I mean, we're not only, we're looking at the unrolling, the, implementation, rather, of a full fiscal 19 budget, but the development of a 20 budget. We're going to hear tonight, later on, about what's going on at the Walton, but that's not going to start and stop. We're back on, we're back on for new high school projects and proposals, so there's some, lots of dovetailing there, and lots of other committee work, finance, facilities, even labor relations, what are the types of things that we're going to be discussing with each of the labor groups with regard to expectations moving forward. So, I think this is some, some unison to bring some of these topics together.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Ms. Leakos.
Thanks, Tom. So, first, first, I said, thank you for putting all this together, and I think it really, it does reflect the conversations we've had, and I think the, the way you've framed the student services Subcommittee is, does very much reflect the conversation that we had as a group at the last meeting, and I really appreciate that. It, I do have some of the, you know, I share some of the concerns that Chris raised and Anne as well, but I think those are things that we can work through together. I like a lot of the language in the student services Subcommittee, you know, it made me think, actually, why don't we go back to the, the district instructional strategy, right? So, under individualized student learning, here's some of our language, identify targets, student growth measures, and inform teaching and drive school and district goals, but these next two are really, I think, apropos, develop effective inclusive practices using tiered strategies to meet the diverse academic and social emotional needs of all students, and implement new social, emotional, health, and learning strategies. So, there's our district strategy, right? So, what if this Subcommittee really dug into oversight, how are we doing in those goals, right? And obviously, special education is a key part of that, so that might be a really nice frame for, for the Subcommittee's work. So, the only other thing, I think the other restructuring is great, the only other thing I did notice when we did, when, I think when I was chair, or when Anne was chair, when we had the labor relations Subcommittee, we added also some work for that Subcommittee to help with the superintendent evaluation. You know, the superintendent evaluation is the responsibility of the entire committee, as we know, and there's a, you know, a very clear developed process that we follow, but there was some role for the Subcommittee, too, I think helps the superintendent set some goals originally. I don't know if that worked out well, if that's something we want to keep, but I just raised that as a possibility. Otherwise, thank you, I'm very happy, and I'm happy to support this.
Other comments? Yes, Ms. Guida.
Thanks again to Tom for putting this forward. So, to Chris and Greg's point, I think it is, you know, in its early stages, you know, to kind of get the ball rolling on the student services Subcommittee, specifically to highlight some more immediate and pressing priorities, you know, in conversation with the superintendent and assistant superintendent, and going back to what you just read from instructional strategy, because I think in the beginning, it can kind of get, you know, overloaded and maybe overwhelmed with, you know, how many things that, you know, we should be discussing, but maybe to get the ball rolling, you know, highlight a few of those points. And then also, when we communicate with our community and families, you know, we have sort of a protocol, if we're receiving email, and so, I would assume that we follow the same protocol, so that we're not speaking out of turn, and I think we spoke to the hierarchy of sort of how we're supposed to, you know, guide our family members and community members to speak to the teacher, and speak to the principal, and the administrators, and we're not making any, you know, decisions or recommendations, but to put them in the right, in front of the right people. And so, with this Subcommittee, it seems like sometimes things can get a little bit more personal, so in doing that, you know, just kind of remember, I'm assuming that we need to remember the same protocol.
Indeed.
Because I think that the communication, there'll, there'll be a lot more communication with creating this kind of Subcommittee. We might be opening ourselves up to more, which is what we want to do, but just sort of remember in the back of our minds that that's how we need to approach, which Chris spoke to as well, so.
Excellent.
And I'm understanding that, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, spot on. Mr. Massey?
Kind of just going off of that, one of my instincts was also that four subcommittees might be a little bit excessive, but I do think it's worth kind of a trial run for a year to see how it goes, and, just, you know, kind of take Amy's expertise among, along with the rest of us, and, you know, give it a shot. I do think, you know, we could accomplish a lot from this Subcommittee, and kind of going off of some other points as well, it doesn't mean that we should be micromanaging any departments, you know, it doesn't mean we should be taking calls from a student's parent, looking to change their teacher or something, you know. I think if we're careful with that, and we just, you know, try to help the department, I think, I think it could be a good idea.
Any other, Mr. Lyons, do you have anything to? Any other, Mr. Lyons, do you have anything to?
No.
Add to this?
I think we've covered it.
This tumbly?
I think we've covered it.
Okay. And any further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded. No further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, again, thank you. Thank you for your patience and spirit in the last couple of meetings, um, in the leading up to, um, what will be a very, very busy, but, but productive year. Um, so, just to reiterate in answering Chris's question of, of moments ago, um, the next step would be to, I'm asking members to shoot me an email in the coming days, um, requesting or offering, volunteering, whatever verb we choose, uh, which of these four subcommittees you'd like to serve on. Certainly, with seven of us and now four subcommittees, we'll be doing double and perhaps triple duty. One thing I would also point out is anyone that seeks to be on labor relations, um, number one, uh, without disclosing anything we don't already know, we're down one member. Chris is not a participant for reasons of ethics and others.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest. So there's only a possibility of six of us, not seven of us, on that committee, and it's going to be a lot of work this year. We will be meeting in earnest, although we've not discussed this with any of the collective bargaining groups, so I don't mean to speak on all of our behalf, but certainly we'll be beginning to meet in earnest, I would guess, right after the, the December holidays, if not, perhaps even sooner. So, volunteering for three committees, including that one, may be a tall order, um, but nonetheless, I just put that out there for, for practicality's sake. So I would, I would like to, um, ask if you put forward three, uh, three recommendations or three, to volunteer for three committees. You can put them in your preference, if you have such, if you don't have preference, you know, however, however that make, that come about. But just if you put labor relations in that mix, be mindful that that's a tall order of work. Okay? So, uh, if anyone could shoot me an email with that, make that individual emails to me, not the group dialogue, and, um, we'll have those appointments at the September, September twelfth, meeting, which I think is September eleventh, isn't it? But anyways, okay, very good. Next, item seven D, also began this conversation, I believe, at the first meeting, uh, the last meeting in June. I put out a thought that a couple of years ago, we had a school committee retreat, a day-long, uh, retreat, uh, which I thought, at the time, was quite productive, that we've had a little bit of turnover on the committee since then, as well as a new superintendent. So I would like to reintroduce that thinking into our fall schedule, or that concept, rather, into our fall schedule. My proposal, although certainly without a date attached to it yet, um, for our consideration would be to have a, a, a Saturday, so for us to be able to not have, you know, a series of, you know, weeknights that have starts and stops and two-hour gaps and, uh, you know, dinner times and other times. We put aside with a good, you know, month or month and a half notice, we put aside a Saturday, eight AM to three PM, that type of thing. And we, uh, we, obviously, it's a fully, uh, public meeting, should anyone choose to come, but nonetheless, we have that, we take that opportunity to really focus on goals, priorities, certainly of the now four subcommittees, but as well as the types of things that we want. I think we want to, um, have conversations around priorities for the year, perhaps it's an opportunity, to Ms. Leakos' earlier point, maybe, uh, we hold off on goals for the superintendent till after that meeting, maybe that's a, something that we can roll our sleeves up and spend some time on with Doug, um, at that session. So, anyways, I would like, I would like to introduce that as a, or reintroduce that as, as a thought with the hope of, of being able to, between now and, let's say, November first, find a Saturday in our, in our busy lives, that we may be able to do that. So, conceptually, thoughts? Comments? Yes, Ms. Leakos?
Totally supportive. Uh, the last time we did it, I thought it was really productive, and I think we talked about it last time, um, um, you know, consider bringing, um, our MASC partners, we had Dorothy Presser from Linfield, and she was an excellent facilitator, um, and, um, so, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and I, I forgot to mention that as well. I would be, my intention to recommend that we ask a facilitator from MASC, so, uh, so there's not a, there's not a chair, so to speak, that I'm an equal contributor to the conversation as well as facilitator.
If, if you'd like, I, I could, um, Dorothy Press was just at one of our organization meetings, and we spoke, um, I can reach out to Dorothy and find out some available times, and maybe speak to members of the committee and think about drafting an agenda, or have a few different proposals.
So, i- if, if the committee thinks, continues that wanted to do this, what, what my next step would be, would be to shoot an email that was effectively like a, like a Survey Monkey that had all the Saturdays between now and, I didn't quite arbitrarily pick November first, but we don't want to be doing this in March, so we need to do this sooner than later.
Yeah.
So I was going to send out a, a quick, sort of a doodle.
Yeah.
With all the Saturdays in it, and then respond to that doodle with what may be best that we can, either if we have things, can we rearrange them to make, to make this work? And then have our ability at the next meeting here be able to parse that forward. I would then seek a person to, uh, a single volunteer, which perhaps I may impose upon the vice chair, he doesn't know this yet, but he's sitting right there, uh, otherwise focused, in working with the superintendent, to, to design that agenda. To, to design that agenda. So that would be something that I think the three of us, the three of us could do. Uh, the last time, uh, we asked the, the savings bank, they hosted us, uh, in their conference room, so it was off, sort of off-site, wasn't out of town, but nonetheless, and we, um, I think it was a, a nice, nice, successful day. So that would be, if everyone's on board with this, there's really no motion necessary other than consensus. If we're all on board with that, I would shoot out a doodle, and we'll land on a Saturday that will work in the next two months.
Yeah? That's a question.
Yes.
Um, are the, I was, I've been looking at the summer institute programs over, over the summer, um, are they able to re-present those if we have one of the, um, you know, members come out?
Yes.
Like, social emotional learning, you know, something like, I know you're putting an agenda together with Chris, but...
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Because there were a few that, that just seemed like, especially that one, because we're adding that to our instructional, instructional strategy.
That's a terrific idea. In fact, one of the, uh, you know, once we land at a, at a date, in designing that agenda, that's something that can be, it wouldn't be fluid, but certainly doesn't, can, can those conversations, I mean, ideas can be brought forward.
Okay.
So I think that's a terrific idea, because we want, I mean, I would, I would want it in, in agenda or topics that are meaningful.
Right, yeah.
And meaningful to the work that we're doing, and meaningful to the, um, you know, to the, the surroundings, or the, the, the times that we're living. So, I think that's a terrific idea. Thanks, Colleen, yeah. So, does that work, folks? Okay, great, 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 thank you. Okay, moving along, superintendents' reports. Mr. Lyons?
Thank you very much, Mr. Markham. Um, I, I'd like to invite, um, Lynn Stapleton up, up to the table. Lynn is a, is the owner's project manager, uh, for, she works for Left Field, and she is, is managing the Walton project, and she also worked on the Galvin project, correct?
She managed that as well?
And, and, um, and so, you know, one of the things, you know, where, um, Lynn has been at all of the meetings since, since the beginning, and so, um, she has seen kind of, um, the, the, every, every bit of the construction from, from the beginning, where kind of the concept, to, to breaking ground, to managing kind of the changes that we've needed to make in the school, and so it's, it's great to be able to have her here tonight, and so I appreciate that you were able to come. Um, and so I was hopeful that you could just give the committee an update, um, around the information that you've shared as of late, um, on the Walton site.
Okay, well, um, as many of you know, um, the school is really coming down to the wire in terms of completion. BC is working really hard to achieve substantial completion by the end of the week, and this is in anticipation of getting final inspections. Right now, we have fire alarm and fire department inspections scheduled for this Saturday, September first, and we have the final building inspections, uh, scheduled for Tuesday, September fourth. It is the expectation that we will achieve the certificate of occupancy on September fourth. At that point, uh, teachers will be allowed to come in and start to unpack their, um, their boxes and get their rooms ready. This week, um, the majority of the exterior work will be completed. Tomorrow, landscaping is happening, trees are being installed, bushes, shrubs, all that, it'll, um, and, uh, final paving is scheduled for Fri- this coming Friday, uh, as well as by Friday, the main entrance will be complete and, and painted, um, and it'll start to become, look more like a school than a construction site, um, by the end of this week. In terms of, um, the interior work, um, all the physical spaces are finished and in place, uh, I mean, there's no more construction per se in regards to that. It's down to finish work and detailing work that is, um, will be ongoing all this week. The class, all the furniture, the existing furniture, as well as the new furniture that we ordered, have been received and put into all of the spaces that they are intended for. Uh, we also moved back all of the teachers' boxes and all of their supplies, and they're in each of the teachers' classrooms, ready to be unpacked as soon as we can get a certificate of occupancy. Um, we, I mean, there are, there are going to be some loose ends that we'll have to finish up, uh, after school, um, but it's, it's nothing that would prevent us from occupying the building. A lot of it will be, um, right now, we're trying to get the winter shades and everything in by Friday, um, some of that may spill over into next week. Uh, we do have, um, a furniture order that's not student furniture, but some of the, um, teacher furniture that, um, is spilling over into mid-September because of a delay from the manufacturer. And then we were also able to add new lockers that we hadn't anticipated, that probably won't come in until October. So there'll be a little loose ends like that, that we'll have to continue to, to complete after school starts, but it's work that can be completed after the, the regular school day. This weekend, you'll see a major change on the interior as well. Right now, we've got construction tools and, and everything all over the school. We'll, we'll start to move the remainder of the, uh, construction equipment off-site by the end of the week, and all of the construction materials and debris and everything else inside the school will be moved out, and there'll be a major cleaning that occurs this weekend. I know when you go in and look around the school, it looks like there's a lot to be done, there is, but a lot of it, once we start to clear things out of there, it'll start to, you know, look more like a school that's ready for, uh, occupancy by students and teachers, so. That, kind of in a nutshell, is where we're at, and I don't know if you have any questions of, of me, but, uh, I know everybody's worked hard to get us to this point. Just as, on a positive note, we were able to provide about thirty percent more scope for renovation and refurbishment of the existing school than, than we thought we would be able to, and I think it'll be a real benefit for the whole school community, community and students and teachers, so.
Ms. Fortier?
Um, are the lunch facilities going to be ready?
We're working on that now. Uh, we did, uh, get thrown a little bit of a loop where we have to put in a grease interceptor, so they're starting work on that this week. We do have all of the kitchen equipment, um, that's being assembled and put in place, hopefully tomorrow, that will be the case. The plumber has been on-site this week, really, uh, getting ready to install all, you know, to connect to all these things, um, but it is the intention that we will be complete by the start of school with, with the kitchen.
So they, the kids will be able to have a hot lunch, as opposed to bringing lunch in or bagged lunch?
Well, this is a warming kitchen. It's, uh...
Okay, gotcha.
It's not a food, necessarily a food prep kitchen.
Right.
We'll be warming, um, lunches, but, um, not hot lunch per se, I guess.
Right, okay.
It's the same hot lunch they get, got before, and they have the green wood, I mean...
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I know they're going to cook it there, but they're not going to necessarily...
This is distinction, distinction in terms of port of health and, um, the type of kitchen we're providing, and that sort of thing.
Gotcha.
So, just, I, I know that, I kind of have a scrolling list of questions that I know that virtually everyone has, you know, and lunches is one, pickup and drop off is another, you know, what is plan B if we're unable to open? I mean, so I think we're prepared to kind of address most of these questions at this point. Um, you know, I think, um, one of the things that has surprised us is the amount of work that the construction company's been able to get done in such a short amount of time. So even though we're getting close and everyone's anxiety is kind of ticking up slowly, myself included, right? Is, is that...
You're at the head of the list.
Yeah, that's right, yes. You know, um, and so, one of, so when we look at this, we, we are asking these very same questions, but to answer your question, Ann, I think, you know, if we have access to the kitchen, we will, or this, what do we, the serv- what do we call it?
Servery.
Servery. And so if we have access to the servery, um, we will use it. If we don't, I think the plan B is to have cold lunches, like, um, we did in the spring to, to end the school year, you know? So, I don't want to cut you off, I don't want to be respectful of your time.
No, no, I mean, in terms of, if, if that happens to be the case, where we have cold lunches, um, the, the, um, gymnasium cafeteria floor was completed today, and they hope to, uh, paint the lines on it by the end of this week as well. And the, all of the cafeteria tables are standing in the hallway, ready to go in.
Right.
So there'll be a place for them to eat, and there'll be a provision for lunch, yeah.
Ms. Leakos?
Thank you, Tom. So thank you for giving us this update tonight, and, um, please, uh, um, you know, for you and the whole team there, let, let them know how much the school committee appreciates how hard everybody's worked to get, get to this point. I just had two questions. One, um, you didn't mention technology infrastructure, given how, um, reliant we are on, um, in, in so many respects in our educational program for technology. Can you give us a quick summary of where we are there?
Yes, they've, um, expanded what was available at the Walton School originally. Uh, we have wireless access points throughout the school. Um, the, uh, the server rack is up and functional, um, I mean, we're waiting for power on some of, some of the, connection of power on some of the devices and things like that, but in terms of it being in place, uh, it is in place, we're just doing the final connections and things like that now.
Thank you. Um, and then my second question was, uh, around, um, the neighborhood, um, how things have gone with the neighbors around the school, recognizing this, of course, has been disruptive for many of them, and, um, how appreciative we are as a, as a school community for their patience, but, um, can you give us just a summary of how things have gone there?
Um, I will say that the neighbors have been very, very patient and have endured a lot. I mean, it is a very tight site, um, there was a lot that occurred, um, this summer, and, like I said, thirty percent more than we anticipated, um, so that, with that, brought a lot of extra construction. I think that we have tried to be considerate of the neighbors. I know that on occasion, you know, we violated their trust, uh, but we've tried to remedy, remedy that as quickly as possible. Uh, our company has had a clerk on-site full-time, as soon as I get a complaint or he gets a complaint, we try to address it immediately. I think, uh, BC Construction has done a really good job in trying to, uh, keep all of their various, and there were many of them, subcontractors in line, uh, in terms of, from parking to noise to early starts to late starts, all of that. I mean, it's been, it's been really tou- tough to keep as many people that has been on-site this summer, you know, in line and, and following the policies that we put in place, but for the most part, they've tried really hard to do that, and I think with, except, with the exception of, you know, a few major violations, I think, in terms of park, blocking people in and things like that, I think we've done as good a job as we could do, given where the school is and has congested of a site that it is. where the school is and has congested of a site that it is. I do know that we had an issue with the chiller that we have installed there. It's pretty big. It was, I think, surprising to everyone how big it is. I think sitting up on the hill the way it does, it, it even seems more opposing than, you know, if you're right up against it. And I, I know that the neighbors are very concerned about that, and that's one of the components that is kind of lagging a little bit. We, we did call for a specialized screen that is acoustical absorbing to go around the school, as well as a lot of evergreens to go around the fencing, so that we hide it visually and we take care of it from an acoustical standpoint.
Nice, good.
That's fall- falling behind. However, there was a startup of the chiller, and it was very quiet, and the decibel readings on that were a normal city street. So, you know, we, we feel confident that once we get everything in place, that, that the chiller won't be aesthetically unpleasing nor acoustically unpleasing to the neighbors. So, we, you know, that, that was one thing that we were really concerned about, 'cause I know that the neighbors were concerned about that.
Yeah, great. Thanks very much. And then, my final comment is maybe going to be a suggestion, possibly, could we have a school committee meeting there in the fall when appropriate? You know, maybe a walk-through or even a, you know, an informal meeting? I think it'd be great to get over there as a group and, you know, when, when it's ready and least disruptive to celebrate and, and thank everybody for everything, all the work that has gone into this, so, just a suggestion.
Now, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Well, if I, if I could, if I, on behalf, could, could we cut to the chase and, and ask on everyone's behalf, what is Plan B? Not that, not that we don't have full confidence, I don't say that inappropriately, just, obviously, that's the question.
In regard to...
I reiterate everything that's been already said with your work and everyone's work, but school is a week away.
Right, and in regard to Plan B, in, so, which Plan B? So, we have...
Fair enough.
So, in regard to opening?
Yeah, if, so, let's take the worst case, perhaps worst case, and as I appreciate it, if the building inspector on Tuesday doesn't grant us an occupancy permit, that has to be worst case, right? Okay, is there a Plan B for that?
So, the Plan B for that, at this point, we would have to modify the schedule, and the next, the next question that I think we would need to answer between the, between the project management group, between the PBC, between the, the construction company would be, if not Tuesday, then when, right? Because we, we were developing on, on a different site, or the, the plan for a different site, and with all of the progress that had been made at Walton, we changed that plan, okay? And so, and I think that we met with the teachers, and we've met with parents, and so, in a meeting with the teachers, I think that they were very pleased that at least they're going back to Walton. So, I think the teachers and the faculty are prepared, based on their experience that they have gone through last spring, where, you know, the main office was in a trailer, you know, I mean, there was, they went through some things last spring where they feel like they can just endure it just a, a little bit longer. If we don't get in on, if we don't get the occupancy on Tuesday, I think we're, what we're gonna need to do is look at our schedule for Thursday and Friday. We have modified the teachers' start day on Wednesday already, to give them more time in the classroom. But as of right now, we have a few different schedules. You know, we've, we've talked about a half-day schedule for students on Thursday and Friday, if needed. We've talked about, you know, if we don't get the occupancy permit and we can't have school, we've talked about a later start, but it's all predicated on us successfully getting the permit on Tuesday.
What are some of the other concerns that could relate to another, some of the other Plan Bs?
So, we've talked about the construction, there's still gonna be items that are outstanding, how that work takes place is, is a question. You know, I think the project management group and the construction company, BC Construction, has talked about, you know, if they need to, they will build petitions that, similar to what existed in the spring, and they will continue that work on the other side of those petitions. No one will have entrance to the school, the main school as it is, but they would have entrance to the, the, kind of the walled-off areas, and construction would continue during those times. And so, we're not anticipating that that's going to take that long. You know, we were, we were, it was communicated with us that the gym floor would take longer than it is actually taking us, you know? So, as some things seem to lag, some things are going faster, some things are going slower. You know, one of the things that I, you know, we've tried to communicate consistently is the, you know, renovating an old building. It's not different than renovating your house. When you open something up and you run into an issue, you have to make adjustments, and I think that the project management group, the PBC, the building inspector, the town administrator, all parties involved here have been very thoughtful about how they've provided guidance and really been thoughtful about making decisions that won't come back in, in, in ways that are gonna be negative. For example, the abatement of the asbestos tile. You know, initially, the scope of the work was to only do an abatement on part of the school, when then the decision was made to do the entire school. It's a very appropriate decision to make, but that took, I mean, it took a couple of weeks to, to, to re-tile all of the classrooms. And so, we're, we're just trying to make up time and, and really get in as soon as we can. But, but right now, we're thinking about, you know, Plan A is starting on time, right? We have support and help set up for the teachers when we do get access on Tuesday. There's gonna be helpers in each classroom to help the teachers unpack their boxes and prepare their rooms. All of their desks and their materials are in their rooms. There's still an awful lot to unpack. Now, don't forget, they emptied the entire school. The entire school is emptied, packed up, and taken off-site, and now, everything's brought back in boxes. So, those boxes need to be unpacked, rooms need to be cleaned, classrooms need to be set up, not a small job. And so, but we have help set up for those people, for the, those people, for the teachers. We have cleaning staff set up to clean and to get kind of boxes and cardboard out of the building as soon as we possibly can. So, there's, there's kind of several tiers to this work, but it's really all predicated on time. And so, I think in the coming days, hopefully sooner than later, we can hear from all parties to really know where we stand, to see if we do need to modify or come up with a Plan B schedule. Again, either half-days or maybe even delaying till the following Monday. But, that's something that I think is only, it's just responsible for us to kind of think through, but that's where we're at.
Good.
So, I'm sorry for the long answer.
No, no, it's terrific, it's terrific, thank you.
I just have a couple of disagreements. Not only did this, you know, the scope of the work expand with the floors, but, you know, the air conditioning wasn't always on the table. I mean, it was always talked about, but it was, weren't sure we'd have the money. We painted every classroom, there's new countertops in every classroom, a whole new phone system for the building. So, the, the scope expanded quite a bit, but the timeline did not.
Right.
But, at the same time, I, you know, in the daily reports that I'm reading, it sounds like, you know, Mr. Roberto has been up there.
He was there today, actually.
And so, I'm sure that he has indicated, fix this before Tuesday, fix that before Tuesday, and so, they know what's coming, and I think that's, you know...
Well, as I said, all the physical spaces are constructed. We're down to finishing them, and the key thing that both the fire chief and the building inspector will be looking for is to make sure that building is safe for life, you know, from a life safety perspective, and that the kids have restrooms as required and egresses and, you know, some of the, the, the bare minimum things that you have to have in a school to open it. And like I said, all of those are on target at, at the moment, so unless there's some issue with a system start, our life safety system starting, or a problem with a restroom and it's not up, up, you know, up and running, those are, I mean, those are the kinds of things that would stop us from getting a certificate of occupancy. And right now, I, we don't see that happening, but it'll be up to both the fire chief and the building inspector.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. I just have two quick questions. Like, in terms of like a punch list that needs to be done, what types of details will be done once the kids are in school? Maybe, and these will happen after hours that maybe parents can be aware of, of maybe miscellaneous things that will be happening after school while the children are not there? And also, I'm just wondering, like, will the playground be available for them to have recess and things like that?
Yes, the playground will be available. We started punch lists two weeks ago, actually. The first set of punch lists were the life safety items that needed to be ready for the opening of school, but also, some of the, the architect, they have to issue a construction control affidavit, basically saying the building's safe to occupy and, and that the work has been completed to their satisfaction. They started issuing those punch lists a couple of weeks ago, which BC has been working on, but there'll be another punch list that'll occur, it's supposed to start on Thursday, Thursday and Friday, they'll be going through, and this will be the finish kind of punch list things, things that doesn't affect occupancy but needs to either be repaired or, or completely finished or whatever. Those punch list items will occur Thursday and Friday, and those are the kinds of things that will happen after school starts. You, I mean, I don't think, it, they won't be disruptive to school operations or anything, but they'll, there will continue to be work that needs to be done after school starts.
Thank you.
Any other comments or thoughts for either Lynn or the superintendent? So, if I may, just to reiterate again, it's a monumental task, and, and really, the amount of work that's been done and, and changed and revised and restarted, you know, is remarkable. So, I think certainly, to reiterate what Mr. Leacosse, Ms. Countess, and I've already mentioned, certainly, a great appreciation to your work and, and, and all of those involved. To the, to the neighbors, certainly, especially, I think we all want to appreciate that, I mean, those that live in that neighborhood on the west side, the buildings been there for, for quite some time anyways, but certainly, great appreciation for, for what is only gonna be a noticeably improved educational facility. So, that can't be, that can't be understated, thanking, thanking them for their patience.
I, I think it was a great team effort. I think it took everybody, from the town to the school district, to the teachers, and, I mean, it took everybody to get to where we are today, and we're still not quite over the finish line, but I think that we'll pull together and, and get there, so...
And also, an appreciation, if I may, to the superintendent, as well as the Walton teachers, faculty and staff, for, for really going through what has been a remarkable last year, or second half of last year anyways, as well as just what they're prepared with enthusiasm and professionalism to, to open this school year with. It's not to be understated and certainly to be greatly appreciated by, by all. So, please pass that along as well, Doug.
We will do that, thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
See you Thursday.
The Doyle.
So, Doyle, we've constructed two new classrooms at Doyle, and, in, in what was the old gym space, we've removed the stage, and we've, we've built two new classrooms there. And so, we have a, a population at Doyle that's changing slightly. It's growing not too much, but we're, we're in, we're having more students attend, and we're keeping more students in district than in the past may have gone out of district, medically fragile students, and we just need more space. So, the town, the DPW department, Marie Sare- and Maria Sareo have worked collaboratively. Rick Stinson, Chris Pierce have been amazing in that space. You know, I think this past weekend, you know, they worked overtime, and, you know, I went over on, I was there Saturday, Sunday, and I'm back again on Monday, and the classrooms were done. And so, the fact that they're done and painters were just finishing up last items was just terrific. It felt like that's kind of one less space that we, we need to worry about, that where we can welcome students and really make the, the best use of the Doyle facility. So, we're particularly pleased that we were able to complete that work, and we're really grateful to, again, the collaborative efforts of the DPW, Mr. Stinson and Chris Pierce with Maria Sareo. So, that's good news. So, that's, those spaces are done, and we'll be moving in there. There's still, they're installing a new boiler in the school, so there are two boilers. They're installing a new boiler, and that will go in during the month of September, and, you know, more information will follow there. I think that that's pretty straightforward. And they're, yes, and, yes, and they're, they're paving like they're paving everywhere. So, they're, they're paving the, the street leading up to Doyle as well, and so, they'll kind of reline that for the parking spots and all of that business, but that is happening as well. Thank you for reminding me, Chris. So, that is the, kind of the latest information on our renovation and construction update. I don't know if anyone has any questions? No?
Nope.
So, I've shared in your packet our handbooks from our elementary, middle and high schools. You know, the handbooks have been essentially updated, you know, we've made some kind of language changes in regard to the most substantial change, I think, so beyond the updating, and what we do every year is we, we review the handbooks and we prepare them, and then what we'll do is we'll send them, we'll provide them, we'll, we'll provide translations in Spanish for those handbooks that we'll also have available online for parents. And so, I, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the handbooks. I'm really pleased to report, one of the most substantial changes in all three levels was at the high school level. They have included diversion as an option for students that may get into trouble. If they get into trouble outside of school with the police, they have an option to be diverted to an education program instead of just being charged formally. It's an alternative program that is, it's common practice in several towns. I'm really, really particularly pleased that our school resource officers brought this forward to the new administration, Amy McLeod, and the assistant principals have kind of reviewed this, they've met with the police, and they've gone over this, and it's kind of a, it's something that we're particularly pleased to be able to, you know, offer to our students, so that we can kind of allow them to be educated and we can kind of coach them about their behavior, so they're not just penalized straightaway. And, and diversion isn't available for all circumstances, for everyone, but the very fact that it is part of our handbook and that we're offering it now is particularly a really great option for our kids. And again, I can't thank our school resource officers and the Wakeville Police enough for bringing this forward. So, that's the major change in the high school. Other than that, you know, names have changed, dates have changed, you know, we've changed a few things in regard to, you know, where policies are and, you know, table of contents, but that's essentially what's changed at all three levels, and you can see those edits because we've left kind of the edited versions, and we are kind of, we have second versions with the edits completed upon your approval of the handbooks.
Before we begin the conversation, we have a motion.
That the school committee approved the student and parent handbooks for the 2018-2019 school year as presented.
Second?
Second. Discussion.
Yes.
I, I can send you a more detailed list that, I apologize that I did not contact you sooner, but the 256-page packet was a lot to get through for this meeting. I have a couple of overriding things.
Yep.
There, there are some small grammatical errors and whatnot I could point out, but unless I missed it... I missed it, only the Galvin mentions the Learn Anywhere project.
Yep.
As part of this, no things. I think that that's a big oversight, that it should be in all of them because the project exists in all of the schools. But the Galvin's the only one that implemented that into the handbook, as far as I could see. I certainly could have missed it. Another totally different point is the elementary book states that if a family moves out of Wakefield, they can petition to still continue to attend that school, where the high school book specifically says they cannot do that. So I guess we need to decide which is correct.
So it's pretty clear in regard to policy that if they don't live in the district, they cannot attend the school. However, when families have transitioned, you know, for example, we have some families that are selling their home right now, and they're getting ready to move, and they've asked, you know, while we're moving or while we're transitioning, can our son or daughter remain at a given school?
Mm-hmm.
And when possible, we've tried to accommodate them. You know, they're in transition, and it's not for an extended period of time.
Which is fine, but I think the rule should be the same at all the schools.
I think the practice is the same at all the schools, and I think the intention is the same at all schools.
It doesn't read the same.
Okay.
Is it that in the elementary schools, if they move from one elementary district to another elementary district, is that what the reference might be?
It could be, but it's, to me, it's not clear.
It's not clear.
Third question I have, again, totally different, in regards to absences.
Yep.
We've seen, the book seems very clear that for an absence to be excused, they have to have a doctor's note. But if my child woke up with a fever this morning, our policy says, don't send them to school.
Yeah.
But I don't necessarily need to bring them to the doctor.
Yep.
So I think that should be an excused absence as well. Maybe there are reasons not, but it just, it doesn't seem consistent with what our desire is, to have someone not go to school with a fever.
Right, so the-
But they shouldn't need a doctor's-
The Mass General Law, Chapter 76, states that a student can be absent from school for 14 and a half days or seven days, okay? And it's very clear about what's excused and what's not excused. The problem is, is that the way that the law is written, it doesn't fully capture the discretion that parents need to have that you're describing.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think in all the books, the law is cited.
Yeah.
As it should be. I think where there is, you know, that there is some discretion in regard to the administrators, and I think the practice of the administrators is consistent, school to school, which is, you know, they, parents are allowed to, you know, if your son or daughter is sick and they're going to be out of school, we want to respect parents in making that decision. If you get up, if their son, if your child gets up in the morning and they have a fever, we're not asking you to send them to school.
We don't want you to send them to school.
It's not, it's not it, okay? But the way that the law is written, it would imply that if you don't have one of the notes or one of the excuses that's in the Mass General Law, that you should send them to school. That is not it, okay? And so that's an area that is going to be very closely reviewed in the coming year because the new accountability system from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires us to monitor school attendance and chronic absenteeism as well.
And I'm sure that this, you know, that happens.
Yeah.
I just think that if it's our desire not to have sick children go to school-
Yeah.
That don't necessarily need a doctor, then we should be more clear as to what we're going to allow or not, or have a certain number of days that are allowed without a doctor's note or something. And my fourth concern is in regards to this whole Saturday detention program. You know, Galvin wants to refer to it as Saturday School, which is, it's detention. But I don't want to be spending Wakefield Public Schools' money on Saturday detention. And for us to run that detention costs us money.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not a place that I want that money, I would like that money to be spent. I think there are plenty of opportunities for discipline without incurring that kind of expense. Had been my understanding, as a matter of fact, I talked to Dr. Smith a few times about it, and I was told that that was discontinued, that I see it in the book, so.
So, you know, I don't know how many Saturdays we had detention last year at the Galvin. I could get that information for you and get back to you.
At Galvin and the high school, yeah.
So I can provide that for middle and high. I do think in the course of this year that you're going to hear a new proposal in regard to that type of discipline.
Okay.
Right, I just don't, I just think it'd be kind of, a little premature for me to kind of report-
Okay.
Kind of where we're at without the administrators that are going to be doing the proposal.
That's fair.
You know, but I think that the administrators at the high school and at the middle school, I think, are really looking for some restorative measures to not exclude kids from class and not look, they're not looking, they're trying to think about ways to educate, right, and coach students well, and also keep them close. And that includes suspensions, you know, how we do that, what do we do? That's going to include a really-
I wonder if the average high school student truly appreciates the consequence of, you know, what a suspension really means. I think a lot of them might view it as, hey, I got some time off, rather than the seriousness with which it's going to, you know, on their permanent record. It might-
You're stealing our thunder for our proposal.
But-
No.
It's a preview.
Preview. So, yes, so you'll hear more on that, Chris.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Questions? Okay.
See, I wrote them down.
So we have a motion that's been made, a motion made and seconded for the approval of the three handbooks in one motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I remember.
Yes? Okay. Ms. Guida?
It was on the diversion. I just, it's just a point. So do students get to choose, or students and families get to choose between the, you know, alternative, what we're trying to propose or we're trying to move towards, or can they choose the more traditional consequence?
So the school resource officer will work with the school administrator to make a recommendation. And the recommendation is often more appealing, if the recommendation for diversion is often more appealing than a court date, right?
Usually.
That could result in legal fees. Right, we would hope, right.
Nevermind.
And so, and so, but you then have to make, you have to meet with a member of the police department to kind of interview, to see if you're serious about it, and you can participate in the educational program.
Right, because that's-
This is, it's not a blow-off. It's not something that you can just do. You know, you need to be serious about it. If that determination is made, then that option is off the table-
They assess that.
And you would be referred accordingly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just didn't know if it was a full move towards, or it's kind of case by case.
Yeah, yes. And so there are kind of levels of consequences in the handbook, you know, and I think that we will collaborate with our SROs and Jason Skilling's to try to make the best recommendation possible for our students and for them to learn and to kind of improve their conduct in where they are.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded for the approval of all three of these handbooks. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Lyons, if we could certainly please pass along our appreciation to, I know there's a faculty effort that begins months ago-
Yes.
For the review of these on an annual basis, that is no small task.
Yeah.
So certainly, great appreciation to the members of the teaching faculty, the guidance staff, and others who help bring forward these changes and edits and clarifications each year. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you for the feedback as well. I appreciate it. Just kind of moving on down the list, item C, just a personnel update. I think Michael Pfefferling mentioned this earlier. We've added four paraeducators to the Doyle faculty, and that is to accommodate special education students. We're also, we've also added a .2 position for one of our art faculty. We had budgeted a .4. That position went from .4 to .6 to accommodate students taking art at the high school. We had kind of, in kind of working closely with Amy McLeod and A.J. Beebe, and really Tom Bankard, he was kind of the architect behind this, he was very clear. We had a whole cohort of students that were excluded from art because we didn't have personnel to teach a class. And, you know, we had talked about, you know, going from a .4 to a .5. .5 is, you know, in the course of a week, that's, you know, someone would be available every other day. We need someone every day, so then we had to go to a .6. And so, and just in talking with Chairman Markham, you know, we just thought that it was the best decision to make in regard to the budget. And planning with Michael, we think that through hiring personnel and through retirements that may come this year, we hope to make up so that there's not a negative, so that the budget is not negatively impacted for those positions. But I'm particularly pleased that we're, again, keeping students in our district and that they're able to attend school here. So that's the very quick personnel update. Any questions on that?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate to this specific line item, but last year, when, or actually in March, when we had the public budget hearing and Dr. Smith agreed to place money into the intervention line to hire someone at the Galvin, was that?
Yep.
Are there any updates on that? And I don't know if it was a 1.0 or 1.5.
So we have 3.5s.
3.5s.
As what we've been able to hire.
And are they all at the Galvin, or are they dispersed?
No, we have one at elementary, one at middle, and one at the high school.
Okay.
Right? And so I can, Amy, I can get you exactly who those people are in our next, in our next meeting?
Yeah.
Or sooner, if you want to touch base in between.
Sure, that'd be great. I'd appreciate that.
I'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
So that's my personnel update as of right now. Yes.
Is all the hiring done?
As of, we just hired, so we have some people that are accepting positions late because they're certified and they might be looking, and they, you know, so we do have some parapositions open at this point in time. But I believe all of our hiring is, we're good. You know, all of our administrative positions are filled, all of our teaching positions are filled. We just hired a new math curriculum coordinator, which we're particularly excited to have. And so, right now, we're good.
Did somebody leave?
Wendy Phillips took a position in Uxbridge, which will cut her commute down by a couple hours a day, or four.
Wow.
Yeah, hours a day.
She did a great job.
She did a great job for us, and we're sorry to see her go, but there was no way that she could, so her family's relocated because her husband got a different job, and I don't think it was her first choice to leave, but, yeah, but that's really a quick. Any other questions about personnel?
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
The .5 at the elementary that you were mentioning to Amy, is that at a specific elementary school, or is it a shared, you know, they go where the population that they're servicing is?
So I know we added at Woodville, but I will get their exact schedule. I'll provide it to both you and Amy.
Okay.
I'll get that to you in the coming days, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right. So that's our-
Ms. Lyons, if I could just ask on everyone's behalf, you can provide that schedule, given that we had a substantive conversation around, you know, effectively a 1.5 FTE, you could provide that schedule to everyone, that would be.
That's okay.
Appreciate it.
Um, so in our last meeting, or the meeting that we had kind of moved some of our items to this meeting, one of the items that I wanted to present to the committee is, just in regard to, I know that you've met the new assistant superintendent, and I think it was, it was my hope that you could kind of review or that appointment and kind of, we could make a motion.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Mr. Countan.
Move the school committee confirm the superintendent's recommendation for the appointment of Cara Morrow as the next assistant superintendent of schools.
It's their second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lyons. Anything else to add?
You know-
We had the privilege of meeting Ms. Morrow at the last meeting.
We did. She is scheduled to start on September 4th, which is a day before we're going to have faculty in, and so we're particularly excited for her to arrive, and there's plenty to do. So that's really all I have in that area right now.
Any comments or questions regarding the appointment of a new assistant superintendent? Seeing that, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. The preliminary MCAS scores have been released. Matt Carter is here tonight, and so Matt, and part of his work is working on the district data dashboard, has already started crunching numbers. And what the, the way the information is provided to us is in this giant kind of data file with probably, you know, 200 columns and probably 4,000 rows. And so Matt has gone through and actually summarized the 5 through 12 data, and again, we're just, we're just starting to work with that. So he's just created some graphs so that the principals and their instructional leadership teams can get a glimpse of that data, and we'll be happy to share that in October, when the scores, or sooner, as soon as the final scores are released, and we can kind of go through and really, with a fine toothed comb, look at that data, look at how kind of question types compare to standards, and really where we fare. And so there'll be more information forthcoming on that, but I did want to just provide you that information, that that information has been released. If anyone has any questions about that.
The 10th graders, did they already know if they were in trouble, or they won't know till October?
We'll have, we'll notify, we have a list of anyone that we're worried about right now. So we, that's one of the reasons why we go through the preliminary data, but I think we're looking at high school, we're looking at just a handful of students, I think, two or three. Great. So.
But if I may to Mr. Countan's question, the parents of 10th graders have no such-
No, because they're just-
Who are now former-
They're just preliminary scores. So when they come out formally in the fall, everyone will be notified on the same timeline, right? So we'll prepare that information and get it out to families, as we've done in the past, Chris.
Okay. I just, to me, those 10th graders is a, you know, it makes a big difference, a bigger difference for them than it does a 3rd grader.
There's, there's no question, Chris, and I, and I think that there's, your words are not missed on me.
So if I may continue, I appreciate the question as a, as a parent of an incoming 11th grader-
[laughing]
Who's in that category, so now I'm getting good news without even you meaning to give me good news. Me and lots of other parents of incoming 11th graders, so I digress.
So I also wanted to share in regard to the new MCAS 2.0 in 2018 that was administered in this coming year, there's new, there's a new way in which accountability ratings will be determined. No longer will we be using the level 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. They have different categories, similar to the ratings of MCAS. What used to be advanced categories, you know, advanced, now we call it exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, and so we'll have similar kind of words in regard to how schools will be rated in regard to the accountability. The indicators that will be used, we will look at achievement scores, we will look at student growth, we're going to look at high school completion for our high school. That's an important piece. We'll look at different levels of proficiency, or the expected, what the department is calling "expected proficiency" for our English language learners. learners. One of the things that I think is going to be a game changer for all districts is we're going to look at absenteeism, and chronic absenteeism is, is listed as, you know, students that are missing 10% of the school year, um, that's 18 days of school for the entire year, um, that's kind of double what the, is expected in regard to the Mass General Law, um, you know, there are always exception to that, and they're all, you know, there are students that have extenuating circumstances where they need to be out, but it's going to require everyone, um, all levels, all schools, to pay attention to, um, you know, why students are out and to really work thoughtfully with them to make sure that, um, they're in school as much as they can be. And so, and the other piece on the high school end is, another indicator is advanced course participation, which is for us, advanced placement classes are AP classes, along with um, another indicator is dual enrollment, which is um, an option for our students. Uh, if you know, if you're not familiar with dual enrollment, it's an opportunity for our high school students to attend um, community college and get high school credit, but also get college credit. It's a way to kind of get a leg up, um, and kind of have that college experience while also kind of getting high school credit as well. And so I think that there'll be, there'll be more about that in, in the future as well. And that's really it for, in regard to accountability right now. When we get our final scores and we do a presentation for staff, uh, excuse me, for school committee and staff, but for school committee, um, we'll talk more about the specifics of our accountability and how it's affecting our work and, you know, the populations that we'll be working with. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that?
Mr. Leakos?
Thanks Doug, just a quick question, I...
I'm trying to remember, but I know that also part of the new accountability system are district report cards, um, and I, if I remember correctly, DESE is rolling out some models for these report cards.
Yeah.
What's the timeline for districts to implement those?
So district report cards have been in place, so uh, you know, I'm not, so they've been in place and we've used them?
Right.
And we've communicated them out to the public in the past?
I guess so, my, I guess my question is, will, will the new district report cards reflect the new accountability rating systems?
They will.
They will, okay, okay, so that's, I think that's an important thing for us to think about as a school committee too, because that's a, an important part of communicating out, you know, our achievement results um, to the, to the larger public.
There's no question.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no question.
Okay.
And just my final item is I attended a meeting with the um, local superintendents, there was probably about 30 superintendents that were, um, who attended the meeting at Burlington High School on August 20th, um, and that was to kind of hear about the, uh, the Baker-Polito investment in public education and school safety. They're proposing, it's a 70-plus million dollar grant, um, to support schools, to, um, to, to do work on the infrastructure of schools, to make them safer, a portion of the grant is dedicated to that, another portion of the grant, it's a two-year grant, um, another portion of the grant will be dedicated to social, emotional and behavioral health, which is exciting for us. We don't know what that means in terms of dollars for Wakefield, that's a big question, um, and there are other kind of ancillary questions that come along with that, like, you know, if we are able to kind of get counseling support for our students, um, at the high school level, let's say, um, after those two years, who, who funds the grant, you know, who funds this, this work? So that's a question as well, but um, the opportunity, so the, this is going to the legislature, and the meeting with, that the governor had um, at Burlington High School was just really a, a kind of a, a precursor to all that will be available within the grant, and it was also an opportunity for him to hear from local superintendents what the challenges are and what they need. Um, and, and there was a great deal of conversation about social, emotional supports and behavioral health and how those are being provided, um, and also how schools, um, are kind of partnering with outside agencies to, to kind of support students not only in school but outside of school as well, which has been a particular area of growth for schools across the state, but there'll be more information forthcoming on that as well, so.
Very good.
That's it.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions, comments for the superintendent? Okay, seeing then, item nine, subcommittee reports. We haven't talked enough about subcommittees tonight, let's, let's talk some more. Uh, Mr. Countan, anything to report since...
Nothing to report.
Last meeting, very good. Uh, same goes for labor and personnel, Ms. Fortier.
Uh, we haven't met yet, I, I do have a, a policy, the meal charging policy that will, that I want to have on the, the next agenda, but I'll touch base with you.
Okay.
So we can talk about it then.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, number 10, item 10, uh, future dates and agenda items. The next scheduled meeting of the school committee is Tuesday, September 11.
11, okay.
Yep. Are there any items that any member of the committee would like to request that the superintendent bring forward either on the 11th or at a future date? This is the time to do that, or certainly shoot either Doug or I an email, we could certainly do that offline as well, but if there's anything that you know that you would like discussed, please proactively give us the chance to, to bring those items forward, okay?
Can I, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, of course.
For some reason, I do have it on the 12th and uh, I, I'm not sure why...
Did we move that, is there a religious, uh...
There's a...
So it's Wednesday, then?
Yeah.
It's Wednesday.
Oh, so it's Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 12th, okay.
Okay, so it's, it's Wednesday, September 12th.
Right, although, I mean, I think it's, so Rosh Hashanah is, it begins on the 9th and it goes through the 10th, um, so I'm not sure why we moved it to the 12th.
I'm sorry?
Justice Mathis asked me to move it.
Did she?
In appreciation for the religious holiday.
For the holiday, okay.
Okay.
But it is in fact not.
Well, that, uh...
So why don't we clarify that, let's take that off, off, offline and we can find out exactly
Right.
when the holiday is celebrated and when the expectation of, of public accommodation should be most appropriate.
Right.
But right now, the calendar has it for Wednesday, September 12th, okay? So we'll get back in ample time prior to the Friday before the meeting, we'll get back in ample time with a clarification on what exactly um, is the most appropriate for recognition and accommodation for the holiday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But thanks for bringing that up, yeah, that's, that's a good, uh, good, it's a good pickup. Yes, Chris, is your hand up?
No.
Okay, any, any other items under 10? School committee comments going around the table, Ms. Purcell?
I would just like to thank the chairman and the school committee for um, voting to create the new subcommittee. I think that it will be very beneficial to the families and the children of Wakefield, and um, I appreciate that, so thank you.
Good, very good. Ms. Fortier?
I am also.
Mr. Leakos?
Well, I guess we should wish the staff and the students a happy and healthy start to the school year. That's all.
What a great idea, Chris. This is what we're all about, and we just, we blew right by it. Mr. Countan?
Let's just look forward to a, a smooth opening and uh, that everything falls into place as it should.
Mr. Massey?
Best of luck with the new school year.
Thank you.
Ms. Guider?
That's what I had written, I wrote it down.
No, you got to go last.
Uh, and just to add, you know, smooth transitions, uh, you know, we wish all the families and, you know, to um, keep our families passionate about their children's education and never feel, um, you know, that they shouldn't be reaching out and, and contacting us and the administrators and their teachers, um, so that we can all provide the best learning environment for the students.
Very good. Back on item 7A, which was the general comments of the chair, I, you know, you may have picked up that I skipped over that because I had forgotten what I was going to say.
Aha.
I've now remembered what I was going to say, so I apologize, I'm going to just move it here, but um, what I was going to make mention to is, um, right now, we're going to begin the planning for the Fall MASC/MASSS Conference, um, and we keep that on our calendars, uh, it's certainly, I want to encourage every member of the committee, if, if able to attend that conference, it's, it's down in, in Hyannis, um, the first week beginning the day after Election Day, which is whatever that November Election Day is, I don't have the date off the top of my head.
Actually, I was going to ask about that.
I think that would be right, but my point is to be thinking about that so we can have not only a good representation, but it is a very vibrant conference to attend. I'm a, uh, usually a typical attendee, but there's really lots of good workshops and seminars, um, and certainly there's lots of opportunity to meet with colleagues from around the state who are facing the same types of issues that we are, we're not, we don't live in a bubble, uh, some, most of what we're doing is not exclusively unique to Wakefield, uh, so it's a really good opportunity once a year to have superintendents and school committee members sit down in both formal and informal settings. So anyways, please keep that in mind, um, one of the reminders that I'll be putting out, uh, with the doodle on the dates will be about that and about asking people to get back to us about, so we can make a reservation and so forth, uh, because that's always had quite a beneficial thing that I want to advocate attendance. And I would just add, things that have already been said, it's just a wonderful, uh, opening of the school year, I hope everyone had, everyone in the community had a healthy and enjoyable summer, I know lots of people here at the school department didn't have much of a relaxing last couple of weeks, but nonetheless, uh, it's certainly been productive and active, and the fruits of, of all of that work has not gone unnoticed or unappreciated around, around, around the table and around town, so um, welcome to the new school year, everyone, um, and certainly appreciative to our faculty and staff for all the work that, that they're going to be doing this year and, uh, coming back with great enthusiasm for the, for the start of a new year. So with that in mind, we have a motion to adjourn.
Well, the school committee adjourn its meeting of August 28th, 2018.
Is there a second discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you.